We're just looking to, we're pretty proud of what we're doing in that plaza redevelopment and just want to make sure that we're building this, you know, the sun of the building shows our, probably our restaurant. And also, we kind of, we split, also, we split our, for all of our taprooms, we generally split our restaurant side and our taproom side anyway, so we always try to designate both of those as separate. So that's why we wanted to manage.
With the new process, does the board have to reconsider? That's my question. We usually go through the agenda re-reading.
No, I'm just kidding. It's not a record now, so.
Okay, we're good. Questions from the board?
You want to start with the monument sign, is that what you said?
Yes, sir. And I actually do, if you, if you want, I unfortunately couldn't get it in time because more, I do have, I do have the revised copies of the proposed 10-foot sign if the board would like to see them.
That'd be great. Yeah, if you'd very welcome it.
Yep.
Does the board have any questions on the monument sign?
This is actually what Bill Gray's asking the other people to consider.
Okay. Okay. Move on to the, the building signs. Does the board have any questions on the building signs themselves?
I guess I'm wondering, um, the need for all of them. They did go to Bill Gray's around quite the taproom area, so much of the taproom in Ontario. They both have road signs and the one in Aranacoy has significantly less signage as far as all in one place. And even in Ontario, the signage just appeared less. I understand the need to have the taproom entrance separate from the Bill Gray's restaurant entrance, but is there a way to incorporate, say like the Bill Gray's on the tower over the restaurant door with World's Greatest Cheeseburger just to reduce the number of signs? Because you're asking for two more than technically are permitted, so just curious as to why.
Well, again, we, the center, the center sign, the larger one, was kind of showing that the overall, it's kind of umbrella of, this is, you know, the two, the, basically the two, we have two different tent spaces, basically, of the, because originally we developed Pride site as, you know, it's, there's two towers of it already, so to keep in line with the symmetry of that, you know, as well, we have the one side of the restaurant, the one side of the taproom, and then obviously the old Archie thing, the old Archie theme of it's Bill Gray's in the center has kind of what our, our mindset was of that, and also that the fact that it's the main tenant for, for the plaza itself. You know, that we own it and it's kind of where we're, the feature tenant in the space. And then again, the one in Aranacoy, I understand there's less signage on it, that's also, it's also a much smaller location, I believe that, worth, that place is 7,000 square feet. The new taproom, the new proposed site here, we're building this 15,000 square feet. And also, also, also the taproom as well to add on to that one. Seabreeze is a good example also of that as well.
What's?
There's one in Aranacoy.
The one, the Aranacoy one, I thought you were talking about the one on, the Aranacoy went on Ridge Road.
Seabreeze.
Oh, Seabreeze, okay. Yeah. We also have, you know, the other thing I want to mention too is, our current location in Webster that doesn't have a taproom has all that stuff, it doesn't have a taproom sign on it, but it has one, two, has three signs on the building, and on the south side of the building is, is Bill Gray's and Home of the World's Greatest Cheeseburger. Because Home of the World's Greatest Cheeseburger has been a, a, like a brand, it's part of our, this is part of our signage for a while now, and Ontario being one of our oldest locations, Webster's also been there forever. We have our Henryetta location as well, and, there's one more I have on here, I was looking up early this morning. Yeah, Seabreeze has that as well on the, on the south side of the building as well. Oh, I'm sorry, the west side.
Bill Gray's, um, Hard Road, it's, it's only Bill Gray's on Hard, on the Hard Road.
Correct, yeah.
Right?
But there's, what I'm saying, what I'm using as an example of is the fact that the World's Greatest Cheeseburger is, is a part of our, part of our signage for, for the years.
Yep, yep, I got you.
And then again, we're using that specific spot to designate the restaurant side, the Bill Gray's taproom side is, you know, the Bill Gray's taproom, and then Bill Gray's in the middle, simply by that.
Just the whole.
Yes.
Are there more signs that are going to end up going on the Hard Road facade of?
The only, the only signage we would have at the very end would be, or if it was all sudden done, would be at the very far end of the tower, the North End Tower, whenever that tenant comes in, it would be, it would be basically the same thing as the Webster Line Spirits.
Okay.
We'd probably do one facing the east side of the building along the plaza face, and then probably one facing north, over facing towards, you know, the hotel and that.
Yeah, the North End.
Yep. Yep.
I kind of agree that World's Greatest Cheeseburger is kind of a namesake for what you guys do, and it's been on, been on the signs forever. But it is not the name of a building, not the name of a business. It's an advertisement. That, to me, could be put in a window rather than on a 10-by-10 sign.
Again, I understand that, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, I just want to cite that, again, you've had it, it's been on our buildings for ever, ever. I, I understand what you're saying, so, I guess my counterpoint there again is what I, I just, you know, before.
If that wasn't there, that would get you down within the allowable square footage per se.
Other comments from the board? That's all, they're up to public comment. If there's anybody who wants to speak for or against the project, please go up.
Hi, I'm Charlie Kelly from CP Kelly.
I need you to.
Yeah.
Up to the mic and.
Sure. I'm Charlie Kelly from CP Kelly. We're the general contractor here, and I think roughly a year ago in November, we brought in a 3D sign that showed the same facade with the same signage. That was basically approved as long as we dropped that monument sign down to 10 feet. So the signage on that facade is nothing new. And what they're trying to do is really, they like to keep family orientated on the Bill Gray's side and the taproom more on the taproom side. So, and, and Home of the World Cheeseburger is Bill Gray's.
When you said that it was, I'm not clear on the word you said, you said it was basically approved. Was it?
Yeah, one of, one of the comments was if we would drop that.
When?
It was, yeah, November, the November meeting in '23, I believe, was when it was.
It was at the time of the site plan approval.
So we did, we did a 3D rendering sitting across the street that we have a copy of that we had to present here.
And that was a planning board approval.
And I'm sure they said any variances you'll need to go before the zoning were appealed, which is where you are now. So, well, the site plan was approved, the sign, size and locations were not given any variances.
It was, well, it was pretty clear. I, I don't know what the meeting minutes actually say, but it does talk about reducing the tile on the side to 10 foot. When all the owners were here, they agreed to do that at that point in time.
You understand there's a distinction between the functions of the two boards?
100%.
Okay.
We were at both of them.
Let me say.
Zoning and planning.
I don't agree with you being here for the zoning board.
Any variances for zoning?
Only plan.
The site plan didn't require any variances, so you would not have had to come.
Any other, any additional comments?
I don't think that's it for now.
All right. I'll bring it back to the plan, to the zoning board. Any other, any other comments on the zoning board?
One of the boards.
One of the boards.
What, this is the step, what's the game plan for memorializing the PowerPoint in the record? In other words, during the course of the presentation this evening, staff went through a number of different pages, and then a number, went through all the pages of that. And obviously, one of the benefits of doing it electronically is that the power was putting out 24 pages, nine, seven, including in our, you know, our files. So, have we, have you flashed through all of those on our respective screens this evening? Or only choice selections based on the narrative of those that you're writing?
The second description you just gave.
So I think we got to smooth that out somehow. Um, how many pages is this presentation?
The presentation is about 47 pages because it's an exact one-to-one with the applicant's application. So, the application that's submitted to us, that is presented to you all on the board, is put into this PowerPoint, so you have seen.
So there's a, there's an affirmation that there's nothing in the PowerPoint that was not provided to the board members through conventional means?
Correct.
Okay. Would the, and staff notes as well?
The staff notes are an internal and public note for everyone. So, high-intensity commercial district, that's public knowledge.
Okay, so my question is whether it's public knowledge, but that, those notes were also part of that 47-page package that each board member received?
The PowerPoint was not provided in a performance.
No, I know that. The equivalent of the 47 frames was received by the board members electronically.
Yes.
Yes.
And that included the staff notes?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, we did receive, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure for, for the applicant, for the community, that we're not seeing anything that is not reflected in the record.
Yes.
Or the evidence.
Hello, hello, good evening. My name is Rich Maston, I'm vice president of Bill Gray's. We met with the planning board on three separate occasions, two in this forum, and one in a work study, I'm not sure if you were aware of that. We were in this room in a, we shake discussion, and there was three key points that the planning board pointed out to us, that we wanted to work together with the town on. One was the sidewalk, what side of the road it was going to go on, and I had suggested to the town that we would be willing to put the sidewalk in on the east side of Hard Road because of the challenges that the contractors would have with putting in the sidewalk with the underground piping and the flow of land, how it was graded down. There were some concerns with the pitch. The second concern was the dumpster area on Ridge Road, and that we needed to have that properly secured with concrete walls and it was to be gated closed. And we agreed not to have 18-wheelers delivering, making deliveries or pickups off of Ridge Road. So, we're installing a brand-new loading dock on the far west of the building, around the back, and that's where the large tractor trailers would have committed. The third concern that we had, and the town had, was the signage. And we agreed to do everything that the town, the planning board, had asked us to do, with the sidewalk, the loading dock, the parking, as we should. And we had asked for, here is our presentation for the signage package that we need for this building to make ourselves know that this is now the Bill Gray's Plaza, not the Heggard's Plaza. Bill Gray and Bruce Heggard, both have now since passed, Mary Heggard passed last night. They were partners back in the 60s, and we made an offer to the Heggard family partnership, Bill Gray's, buy property, we would redevelop it, and kind of keep it in the family, because a lot of the Heggard's family members are also owners of the Bill Gray's. Getting back to Home of the World's Greatest Cheeseburger, as Jim mentioned to all of you, that is our identity. For all of those people that come to the town of Webster for all these fun events and stays in the hotels, have no idea what Bill Gray's is. They truly don't. Years ago, we approached the town, Nashville variance, to put Home of the World's Greatest Cheeseburger on the south side of the existing building. We have done that at other locations because we're finding the same thing, that Rochester is a great community for all different types of events, and people need to know outside of this market what Bill Gray's is. If you're not from this area and you come to Webster, what's a Bill Gray's? I don't know. It could be a bookstore, it could be anything. It doesn't say it's Bill Gray's Restaurant, it's Bill Gray's. Yes, it says Bill Gray's after him, but Bill Gray's is a fall prey. Home of the World's Greatest Cheeseburger was trademarked back in the late 80s, early 90s. We're proud of that designation because that's who we are. We're about cheeseburgers, kids' meals, fish dinners, and custard. That's our pride. And we encourage the board, please, consider our request for the three signs in the, we're, we're willing to reduce our monument sign, even though there are others that have larger, with possibly fewer tenants, at least fewer tenants on their side. Request 15, we're willing to go down to 10 feet, but please, give us, give us our three signs so we can, we can do our best to repay back what we need to pay back on this project. As Charlie, our general contractor, every time he puts the shovel in the ground, it's a new surprise. And a new surprise doesn't come at a cost of $100, it's tens of thousands. And we, we really are looking to try to bring something great to the community by having Bill Gray's. I don't know if you've all been in the new liquor store, Sherry and John Gonzalez's new liquor store, Sherry Heggard. Beautiful, from what they had, I think it's six times its size. We're going to do the same thing with Bill Gray's, when you come in, it's going to be amazing. And then with the next tenant on the end, and then whatever we do for Don and Rick Warren below, when we redevelop their space, please, take it under serious consideration. We're not asking for a lot, this is a simple thing, and hopefully you would grant us an approval. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Have you, have you ever watched Shark Tank before?
Yes, I've watched it all for seasons.
You know, you should like, if it was Shark Tank, everybody would have a cheeseburger right now. For the presentation.
I may have certificates in my.
I'm just, I'm just kidding, I'm just trying to make it a little lighter.
Well, when we meet, we'll come back next month, I will be sure to bring the cheeseburgers and milkshakes. And be on a Tuesday night, it'll be great place. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Just one question, some comments from the board?
I don't know if it's possible. On the town website, but not in our packets, on the zoning board things, there's a picture of Bill Gray's with all of the signs across the front, not just this slice, so that it gives us a perspective of the, that's very cool.
If they, if they can't find it, I do have a full, I did bring a full.
Because they just, I, when I look at this, it's like, oh, there's a lot of signs in the little space, looking at all of, all of the towers and the, you know, like the building.
Yes, if you can't find it, I can maybe just, even pull out this. Because I was very, very.
Where did you say you saw that? Was it on the town website you said?
Yes, under, the stuff that was with the applications. And I went, oh, okay, yeah. And it, this is a little perspective.
I have, I, I don't have any problem with that thing a little gray because it's a brand.
Obviously, that one's, that one, the colors are different, but.
So the only, only additional sign then would be what is listed as food market? That is the only additional sign? Is that correct?
Correct.
I, I understand it's not the food markets, to, but that's, and it's also the, on the tower, both the north face and the east face.
Yes, sir.
At that, at that point in time.
Yep. Yeah, we should only, if you're, from the, from the east side of that building, there'll just be Webster Line Spirits, the Bill Gray's side package, and then one side at the very end.
What is next to, on the left side of the Bill Gray's side? Is that, is that just a dimension, or is there actually something there?
Left side of?
Even in our small package, there's like a white, white out, yeah, right there.
I believe that's, that's.
That's a dimension.
That's a dimension, okay.
Yes, a dimension.
Okay. Any other comments with this?
I'm not sure which file this came from, but the record should reflect that we have to divide a complete view of the entire front of the plaza for context of, of the signage.
Is, just for my perspective, the line in spirits, sign dimensions, is that, are the World's Greatest Cheeseburger and the taproom the same?
Every single, every single one of the square signs you see are all 10 by 10.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's what I was trying to get out, was it?
Do, are you open to suggestions of sign, signs changing? Take the two signs, well, the, on the sides, make them 9 by 9.
So, wouldn't, I mean, I, I feel like that would create, right, like, at 10 by 10, because Webster Line Spirits is already a 10-foot, a 10 by 10 sign, it would, that would start, that would create a, you know, it wouldn't be uniform across, across the whole front of the building, you'd see them.
If you go 9 by 9 on those signs, shorten the Bill Gray's sign by five feet, that would bring you down within the allowable square footage for your front. And the food market, go back up to 10 by 10, and then you'd have some, on both ends, a little bit smaller and better.
From my perspective, I don't know what that, you know, I guess from not seeing what that ends up gaining, I don't know what we are losing by having the three signs there. And you know that is, you know, it doesn't meet our zoning code. From my perspective, I'm not seeing, I see, what I'm seeing is I see four signs, one for each tenant, if you will, taproom and the cheeseburger location is your tenant locations. And ultimately, I understand Bill Gray's is, it's the restaurant, but in this instance, it's also the Bill Gray's Plaza, essentially, if you will, to a certain degree. I, I understand the request, I don't know what do we gain out of it, losing a foot off of each one of those, other than it'll end up conforming to the square footage requirements? I don't know if we're really getting much.
Well, I think if the applicant wanted to avoid getting a variance, their design professionals could have offered that before they even came here tonight. So, for whatever reason, that's the size they want, they're asking for the variance, if for whatever reason they were to get it, they can go ahead, as he suggested, make a storm tomorrow.
Right.
Get their, get their permits tomorrow if they wanted to. So, I think, I, I understand what he's saying, and from an ease of getting it done and quick of getting it done, they've always had that opportunity, for whatever reason, they've chosen it, type of variance, and we can probably go based on the sign, the size of the idea.
Just a suggestion?
No, no, I'm not jumping on.
Ron, a question?
Yep, that's a good question. We had a conversation up here, I guess I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask my answer to his question, I guess it's, I don't know if you already answered his question, would you guys consider it?
Probably more or less, I, I, that, that was, when we designed this, that was kind of our intent to have this light, the, up like this, and I'd like to continue to try to work towards having, having the square footage that we, that we have on the building.
I appreciate it, thank you.
This is the Bill Gray's taproom in the middle, you got your liquors, the liquor, wine and spirits?
Excuse me?
You have the liquor, the wine and spirits on the corner.
Yes, sir.
And you have Bill Gray's.
The restaurant.
And then you have room for?
The taproom.
No, after the taproom.
After the tap.
Future.
Yeah, after the taproom, we have an additional, we have an additional.
Food mark.
Yeah, it, that's just something that was put in there just to show.
But that will also be 10 by 10?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I'm getting at?
Yep.
All right.
And there'll be one more around.
Around the corner?
Correct.
Okay, yep.
Now, I look at the plaza across the street, just as another example, just looking for long stretches up the side. I have a whole lot more signage, there's a whole lot more tenants, but there's a whole lot, many more signs in the plaza across the street in the same relative length, just based on, based on there's more businesses, but it's, it's excessive as far as the number of signs is what's permitted per code, but based on the number of signs for the length of that building, I don't know that it looks out of place. It should, it balances itself. It should, it balances itself.
Yep, I agree. All right, any other questions from the board at this point, or comments, or... If we're all set, then like to vote on Seager? Seager, yep. Like to make a motion for type two action under Seager pursuant to NYCRR section 617.5 of the environmental code. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any more to add, Chris?
I'm going to say something that Jim, Eric, do you want to cover everything with the staff notes or...
I can read them aloud if we'd like. It was pretty much covered by the board.
No, okay, just like the...
The only thing I will say was that the planning board did conditionally approve the monument sign per zoning board meeting.
At 10 feet, 10 feet, 10 feet.
At 10 feet, yes.
But we did receive a lot from Chairman Pashani stating as such.
And we also received a revised ten-foot monument as well as zoning board.
I think there would be no undesirable changes to the essential character of neighborhood or developments. While there are other remedies to, based on the building design and the existing signage that's there, the post signage is in character and creates a more coherent and cohesive facade along all the road access side of the building. Not a substantial request. There are no detrimental physical or environmental conditions or actions because of this request. And while the set is self-created, once again, based on the design of the building and the existing signage that's there now, I think it is a good remedy and works well with the building.
Anyone else want to add anything else? Do we also have to, do we have to do the monument signs as well?
I think the conditions are similar. And it will be limited to separate resolutions for each sign, or if, other signs versus one of the sign?
Well, there should be a separate finding.
Sort of...
It doesn't be a separate motion, but there should be a finding of perspective.
Okay.
Those are the public side.
Those are the public side. For the monument signage, it will not create detriment to the essential character of the neighborhood. The other monument signs in the area are either at this height or slightly taller. The DJ sign looks to be approximately 10 feet as well. There are signs of the plaza across the street that are less than 10 feet, but there's also plaza signs across the street that are bigger than 10 feet, so it's certainly not out of character of the neighborhood. No other remedy, they had originally requested 15 feet sign height, and has agreed to reduce it to 10 feet, which is significantly less impact, so they had actually improved on the request if they need. There's certainly no environmental or physical impact or conditions to neighborhood district. And while this self-agree, the monument sign is permitted and also really is required in order to identify the business as a current plaza for, for just traffic and directional traffic. And I, do you want to also note that you also agreed to include the address on the sign, which is, thank you.
No problem.
Safety, just better, so...
And it's in an area where there's monument signs all around, I mean, so there, there's no, no adverse of visual impact anywhere else in the area, so, all right. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Bill Gray's signage located at 964 Ridge Road, for three single-face building-mounted facade signs, where one is permitted. That is a two 10-foot by 10-foot signs located on the tower, and one 30-foot by 6-foot sign located in between the two towers, and, and one 10-foot tall monument plaza sign with the building address located upon it. This is associated with the Bill Gray's taproom redevelopment, located on a 6.68 acre parcel on XBL 079.15-1-1.1, located at HC High Intensity Commercial District under section 265-7, code of CalWest.
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mrs. Volker, Mr. Lattman?
Aye.
Mr. Spank, Mr. Sumpel.
Aye. You have the variance for both the monument sign as well as the signs on the plaza itself. You have one here for location, you have to get all variances, or all permits according to start construction.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.